Thank Donna. Okay, so 6:02, meeting called to order with a quorum of members. And we have one agenda item, and that's the kickoff meeting for the rewrite of the Plan of Conservation Development. We have Glenn Chalder here, who has agreed to be our shepherd. So I think unless there's any comments, I would turn it right over to Glenn.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. I am excited to have a chance to work with the Commission here on updating the Plan of Conservation and Development. And tonight, I think, is a kickoff meeting, and I think my goal for tonight's meeting is to talk through some basic initial issues with the Commission. To get your thoughts and feedback about the current plan, and also your thoughts and ideas about the plan update. The way the scope of the work has been organized. Subcommittee is going to undertake the lion's share of the work. We'll be checking back in with the Commission on an occasional basis. In terms of my involvement, and the Committee will be keeping the Commission up to date, I think, on a regular basis in terms of where we're at and where we're going. So I think there's, there's three things I prepared for tonight's meeting. I'd like to go through them one by one if, if, if we can. I guess any questions to do before we get started? I will go. So the first thing I prepared is a planning primer for Kent. And then, would you like me to share this on my screen, or does everybody have it in front of them?
Whichever you prefer, Glenn. I, I've got it open here, but if anybody else has an opinion. Or whatever makes you most comfortable, Glenn.
Um, I think, let me, let's go through the primer real quick. I think I will bring that up on the screen. Is that okay, Donna? If you can, cheers. Allow me to cheer a screen.
Um, I think you are. I don't block anybody from sharing.
There you go. Perfect. So the first thing I prepared for the process moving forward is a document I've called the Planning Primer for Kent. I think members of the Commission are familiar with what the Plan of Conservation and Development is, and how the process is likely to unfold, and the uses of a plan. But there may be people who will catch up, if you will, about the Plan of Conservation and Development Preparation Process in the months to come. And with the Commission's permission, I would ask Donna to put this document up on the town website, make it available for people so they can sort of check in. And the purpose of this is really just provide an overview of what we're doing and what a plan is all about. So the document itself contains eight pages. The first page is just a basic introduction to what planning is. That's the process for making informed decisions about the future. And then pages two and three are really excerpts from the statutes about what a Plan of Conservation and Development shall do, or the Commission shall do, or the plan may do. And just providing, yeah, sort of factual background here so that people can kind of catch up on, on the background and history of, of planning in Kent overall. This Plan of Conservation and Development is an update for the 2013 plan. So page four and five talk about the basic overview of the plan framework, the topics that are in the current plan. And those topics are likely to be addressed as part of the next P O C D. The organization of the plan isn't exactly clear yet. It may be very similar to this. It may be slightly different. We're not quite sure, but much of that will kind of grow out of the discussions we have tonight and the things we learn as part of the process. At that point in time, pages six, seven, eight, and nine, provide an overview of the way that I envision this process is going to unfold. I like to be very flexible in my work with the Commission so that if there's things that are identified as part of this process. Commission feels that we need to make some modifications or revisions. Tonight's the best time to do that before we get started into the process. And so we can talk about some of these work items and refine them, et cetera, as we go. The process itself lays it out. The first section is what we call scoping and researching. This is going to be our, our meeting tonight kickoff with the Commission to learn about issues and concerns that you may have. Talked to, reached out to other boards and agencies. I think Donna was initiating that work. I'm going to talk to the Commission tonight about an online survey. And I'll be doing background research and investigation on things that are relevant to Kent today and, and into the future. And, and the purpose of that is really kind of create a foundation, if you will, of information for the planning process overall. I think from that element of the plan, we'll get into organizing and strategizing the elements in terms of things that could or should be in the plan update. And how to organize those going forward. Series of roundtable discussions with the Subcommittee about plan issues and plan strategies. And then move towards actually preparing a draft plan. And then a process of refining that with the Subcommittee, coming back to the Commission. And then moving towards adoption. The general flow here is that in the summer, we'll be doing the kickoff meeting and the community survey. In the fall, we be organizing and strategizing with the Subcommittee. As we get around New Year's and shortly thereafter, we'll be working on actually the draft plan document itself. And then in the spring of 2022, we'll be refining the plan and moving towards adoption, which we anticipate at this point in time is roughly September of next year. The main reason for that is that there's a 65 day wait period from when the Commission decides to schedule a public hearing. And we can let those months unfold over the summer. July and August, and then come together in September of 2022 to adopt the plan. But that's the basic approach and program. Any thoughts, questions, ideas from the Commission members in terms of the primer, the schedule, the scope of work, anything?
My question is the, this primer, I think it indicated on page one, this is intended for Kent residents. How are we getting, how are we going to get it out to them? And I have the same question about the questionnaire, which I know will come later, but it would seem that it would be appropriate to send this primer and the questionnaire to every Kent resident we can get to. I don't know if that's through the Kent Select Person. She sends out a newsletter. If she, I don't know if she's willing to send it with that, or if you can tell her she should, or somebody else has suggested we get this out through social media. I mean, I know there are Facebook Kent Groups. How do we get this distributed?
I, I think there's a lot of ways that that can happen. I think this early in the process, this is the first work product, if you will, in most communities, this gets up onto the town website. There might even be a special place on the P O C D. Page or the Commission or whatever on the town for people to go and to see this, and that information is going to be readily available. As the process starts to unfold and there's actually more work product. I think at that point in time, there'd be more for people to see. So I think Mark, it's a question of timing. Is what's the Commission's preference? I can certainly work with Donna to get this circulated, make people aware of this information. And hopefully keep people aware as, as time moves on and work products, more work products get created.
I'm sorry, is Andrea, is she your, is she working with you?
I'm just another Kent resident. I'm just another Kent resident.
Well, you're a very special Kent resident, not just another Kent resident. Well, uh, you know, my desire is to be able to say to Kent residents at the end of this process, we gave you every opportunity to to contribute and to have your views known. So, so I would, I would prefer to get this out earlier rather than later in the process, maybe together with the questionnaire. Again, because I would like to be able to say to people without having a whole bunch of public meetings. We told you about this early on, gave you every opportunity to have your input. If you didn't respond to that, feel.
Um, I have access to the, the Town of Kent Facebook page, and I can definitely put this out there. And I know the town clerk has access to the constant contact list that the first selectman uses for the newsletters that she sends out. So I can actually work with Darlene on getting, I'm getting this out via that, that formula. And what'll happen is once it gets into the Kent, the Town of Kent, the actual Town of Kent Facebook page. Someone from the Kent Community Facebook page will pick it up and then they'll share that on the Kent Community Facebook page. I do not belong to that page. I find that it's a conflict in my job, so I don't post on that. But I do post on the official Kent Facebook page. And that's, I could do that. It's not a problem at all.
Do you have any idea how many Kent residents subscribe to the official Kent Select Person's newsletter?
I do not know.
If it's this, if it's the same email address list that the previous selectman was using, Mark, I believe that they had over, do you know what? Before Bruce left, he told me there were over 1,600 email addresses.
Great.
I, I like, I like all those ideas. I think maybe, uh, maybe a brief description, Donna, if you're going to put it on the, on the, on the Facebook page. Maybe just a quick blurb that, that, that the town is, is embarking on this process of rewriting the P O C D and the P O C D is and is used for, and here's a link to a, a primer. And be on the lookout for the survey, which will be and, and with a link, link to the survey. I think that would be, I think that would be a good start this early in the process. So I think Mark is right. I think early and often. Everything that I've heard about, you know, from, from members of the, of the community is that, is that they, they want an opportunity to, to comment. And it's important that, that, that they, they feel like they've had the, the opportunity to comment. So I, I agree with all of that stuff and I, and I think that we should, we should do it early.
Um, I can also ask Darlene, who's the town clerk, to see if I can get her to create another tab on the homepage right now with some. I think there's four tabs on, on there, and that includes minutes and agendas and that kind of thing. So if I can get her to create a tab for the P O C D, then everything that we're putting out would go on that tab, and they wouldn't have to search down, rifle their way through. You know, okay, I need to go to, you know, to the departments. I need to go to, you know, land use. I need to go to plan, planning and zoning. So I'll see if I can get her to do that as well.
Great. I will work with Donna to make all of this happen and be a reality. It's a Donna, I will help you create content and other stuff as we go. And then we can use those vehicles. I, I've written down in big letters early and often, and I think that can be our mantra going forward. Any other thoughts or questions in terms of the overall process, the schedule, or anything else like that?
Um, I had one quick question, Glenn, on page seven, under item three, the third. The third line down, which is, that's a, then we call it the optional P Z C finalized proposed P O C D. Is that I wonder why that's optional. I understood that the, the community meeting was optional.
Yeah, number four is optional.
Hmm.
So number four shows up down below here in the schedule here, sort of almost grayed out a little bit. And I think if you may recall, that was the meeting I strongly encouraged this and suggest this. So I kind of prepared to do it unless the Commission instructs me not to. But the other things I think that my, my thought in putting the schedule and the scope together was that in working with the Subcommittee, we would begin to prepare a draft plan in late spring or early spring, perhaps, whatever of next year. We would come back to the Commission to get comments and feedback on that plan before we shared it with the community in a community meeting. And then after that community meeting and comments, we get back there together again to digest those comments and talk about changes to the plan. So I, I think that if we I, I think those two meetings wrap the, the community meeting.
Okay, I, I understand. I understand where, how that works now, that, that, that's, that's second, second, second optional activity is only necessary if you take the optional activity just above it. So I, I get it. Thanks, Glenn.
Okay, I, I think what I'd like to do next, if it's okay with the Commission, stop sharing here for a second. The next document that I'd like to share, bear with me for a moment. Like to talk about graph survey. I think the first question really for the Commission to think about as we talk about the survey is going to be the timing of the survey. We're headed now into the months of July and August, and we can keep the survey window open to give people ample opportunity, even if they're traveling, or we can delay the survey until later in the summer or early fall. The thought process right now is to reach out to the community early and get their thoughts or feedback on the things that they think are important for us to be considering as part of the P O C D. So let me go through the questions, and then I think the Commission's concepts or ideas on, on when this gets deployed will dictate the work I'll be doing with Donna in terms of public relations and public notifications, et cetera. So this survey will be an online survey. We will use social media, town website, press releases, other ways that we can think of to drive people to the town website, which will link to Survey Monkey, or we can give them a QR code or some other way to link them direct. But the thought about linking them through the town website is also to expose them to the primer and the other information that we're going to be creating perhaps as we go. So there's a short intro that says that, you know, we're going to be updating the 2013 Plan of Conservation and Development. We're looking into the future. We think the plan is going to identify the following topics related to conservation, development, and infrastructure. And input will help the down plan for the future of the community. So that's the basic introduction. Next pages. Question number one is how did you learn about the survey? We're sometimes surprised that, how people find out about this. In years past, it was often, you know, press releases or other things like that, but with social media and electronic email and messaging. We're finding out that that's the most efficient way of distributing the survey. And so this information might be useful for the town and for the P O C D effort going forward. Question number two is, which of the following best describes you? You currently live in Kent as your primary place of residence, or you own property in Kent and use it seasonally or occasionally, or some other type of situation? But we can use this to categorize the responses that we get back and see if it makes a material difference in terms of people's thoughts or attitudes about the future. Third question is, how long have you lived here? Which again, can be useful information in terms of people's thoughts or ideas on, on different aspects of the plan. And then question number four is, where would you, or how would you describe where you live? So for this, I kind of broke the town into four quadrants. It seemed to me, looking at a map, that that might be the easiest one for, for people who are not perhaps map oriented. So I basically chose the Husatonic River and 341. And so that breaks it northwest, northeast, southwest, southeast, and then gave an option for other. Oh, if, if you think that there's commonly understood boundaries that we could, if everybody knows, we could go with those, but these ones seem the most intuitive to me. Question number five was, how important were the following factors in your decision to live in Kent? And this would be randomized on the survey in terms of eliminating any bias in the way the responses includes things like the education system, town amenities, the overall community ambiance or character, housing affordability, housing type or value, proximity to work or family, proximity to parents, spouse, or partner. You grew up here and stayed, or you grew up here and came back later in life. Were some of the options that were provided? And you would click these is either very important, somewhat important, or really not a factor in your decision to come to Kent. And, and in a survey like this, it helps us understand what the things are about the community that are sticky for people. Things that resonate with them and the things that are important for us to keep in mind as, as we move forward. I think if the Commission wants, we can also add another down at the bottom. Please describe. And if, might be other things that come out of this that we haven't identified here on the list, and people would want to tell us about.
Like that idea.
Got it. Uh, question six is, how do you rate the overall quality of I think Kent? Seven is list up the four things in Kent that you are proud of. This is a question that is important, I think, as part of the Plan of Conservation and Development, because what people tend to reveal in their responses to this type of things are, again, the things in the community that are sticky or that make Kent special to them. And it's interesting to see what comes out of this type of question. Back in, in years past, when we did in-person meetings, we did this exercise, and it was called Prouds and Sorrys. And you would put dots on the map, and it really energized the community and really revealed some of the underlying things that people care about. The companion question to that is question number eight, which is please list up the four things in Kent you were sorry about. And this is the indication of the types of things that people, you know, would like to change if they could. If, if there's, you know, some way that we could address this scenario or this situation. Well, what is that? Tell us what it is. We'll see how widespread that particular issue or concern is. And maybe it is something we can include addressing the plan or, or pass off to a another municipal department or something like that, but, but kind of learn about the issues and concerns to people in the community. Question nine is a general, let's say, general goals for the town. How important are these to you? So these can be things like protecting natural resources or expanding housing choices, maintaining or enhancing the town center, dressing vehicular transportation, promoting pedestrian and bicycle options, those types of things. And I think again, we can add another question on the bottom of the list about other. Please describe. But we'll find out what things people really care about. And even if, you know, there doesn't fit neatly into these categories, they can add their other one on the bottom, but still give us a sense of, to these other topics are either very important or somewhat important now.
Glenn, it's a little, it's a little small to read. Is one of the questions relate to broadband and internet access?
It does not.
Maybe we should add that.
What verb would you pick there, Mark? Improving, expanding?
Yeah, I mean, my sense is that a lot of the Kent residents aren't happy with the their lack of access to, and I don't know to what, to broadband, the cable, to to wifi. I'm not sure what it is that they, that they're not happy about, but that's.
Maybe.
I saw you nodding. Say it again?
You've had expanding, I think, enabling access is a good verb.
Yeah. Okay, that's good. I'm good with that.
Mark, would you say that, that internet access is the, is a, is a good catchall? And if so, should we, does, does it, is it important to add cell service? Can both those be combined, or should they be separate?
I'm so non-technical. I don't know what it is. Donna, I saw you nodding. I don't know what it is that people aren't happy about what they don't have. Is it cable? Is it wifi? Is it cellular? All of the above? I just, I don't know.
I think they should be separate. I think that, that cell service or wireless connection is different than, than having a cable connection and wifi in your home. And, and the, the idea of wireless is directly connected to cell towers. And and there are some areas, some properties in Kent that, some roads that are a little further away that don't have cable connections right now. And so I think they're, they're separate.
So let's say, I'm sorry.
I agree with Adam. I think that, um, you know, it, it's definitely two separate issues. So wireless is definitely a hot button, especially recently. You know, the COG has been pushing broadband and has been pushing, um, what's that cable?
IOS?
Cyber optics.
No.
Um, and that's a hot topic right now at the COG and for the Northwest corner as well. I think separating them like Adam had suggested is actually a very good idea.
Yep. And just as a quick side note, there's a provision in the state statutes that allow the town to request maps from the Siding Council of cell, cell coverage. And it can be very illuminating in terms of where coverage is existent is strong in places where it's not. You, you may be aware of it, but when you see a map, it's very helpful. So I will put together the letters for Donna to send. It generally takes probably 90 days at least to get that, because they have to get the information from the carriers.
I have it.
That process started.
I already have it.
But what's the date on it, Donna?
January of this year.
Perfect.
Because they, they, the Siding Council came. There was a proposal to put a cell tower either on Bald Hill or up on Richards Road. And as part of that submission, outage maps had to be provided. So I have all of that.
Was that, did that map include just one carrier or all carriers?
I believe it covered all carriers.
Perfect. Why don't you send that along? I'll take a look at it. That's. I think the follow-up to question nine is question 10. Uh, excuse me, clicked the wrong button there. And the question here is, how well do you think the Town of Kent is doing at addressing these goals? And it again, is the same topics. And I will add the other two about broadband and wireless to this list as well. So the, this allows us to categorize these as high importance to people and, and low results or high results but low importance. And really start to get a sense perhaps of where we could start to focus efforts to have the most impact for people as, as part of this plan. Down at the bottom of this page, there's two questions as well. What do you see as the greatest challenge or need facing Kent? Can be a bit of an eye opener for what people are concerned about. And question 12 is, I think, also useful. And that basically says to people, if you can make one thing happen, what would that be? And seeing where people coalesce around priorities for the community can be one of the strong growth of this question. So be excited to see what, what we get there. The remaining questions on the survey on the next page are basically the demographic questions. Do you own or rent your current residence? What age group be a part of? Gender? And how many people, children of the age of 18 living at home? And again, these can help us categorize the results. And again, these can help us categorize the results. There are a lot of other questions that we could get into in terms of the demographics. Um, but the purpose of the survey, I think, is to get overall information that is going to help inform the P O C D. Um, so I think that we can characterize the responses based on these questions. I think that would serve us well.
Glenn, um, can you go back to the like quadrant, I think, question four about where we live in town? Um, and so reading this, um, like splitting it by quadrants, like, you know, it's. Uh, one intersection town makes sense, but I feel like we're sort of missing. Something too, like people that live in downtown, like I live in downtown, so I would technically be.
Yeah.
But. South of three forty-one.
Yeah, so so I, but that's different, you know, I technically I'd be considered in the same quadrant as someone that lives like. Down by Bold Bridge, right? But living in town and 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 choosing to live in town. Because we have one car and we have a baby and we want to walk to everything is very different from someone else living in the same quadrant.
I think that's an excellent point. If it's okay with the commission, I think we can add this as town center and then outside of the town center in the in those quadrants. I think that would work well.
Thank you.
Glenn, I I know this, this would be controversial, but I was thinking about whether we should add a question about. Would you be willing to have your real estate taxes increased to pay for? Improvements to the town. Because my sense is that historically, you know, people don't want to pay anything more. And you know, it's very nice to, you know, for us to come up with a lot, with a lot of. Suggestions for improvements for the town, but the people aren't willing to pay for it. So we're wasting all the time.
Mark, I gotta, I mean, in the past, we sometimes ask questions about people's willingness or desire to preserve open space and open space generally scores quite well. We ask people if they'd be uh willing to support open space acquisition if their taxes went up and support drops, plummets, if you will. And then you ask people if they'd be willing to support open space if it costs them an extra fifty dollars a year. And then support comes right back up again because when you ask people the tax question, they're afraid that it's going to be like doubling their taxes.
Substantial.
But I think the question that we asked later on in the in the survey about if you could make one thing happen in Kent and make it a better place, what would that be? And then maybe as a follow-up to that question, say, would you be willing to pay? And I'd suggest a monetary amount would would be good. Would you be willing to pay an extra Y dollars per year to make that happen? Because you can separate, I think, the. Everybody's desires for, you know, clean air and sort of the other stuff to a more practical situation. And it it could be something simple or it could be something more significant, but you know, are they willing to put money into that or?
Asked that question and I can't remember where. I don't know if we asked that question. As part of the survey for the new regulations or if that was asked um. They, did they do um a monkey survey when um the Kent Land Trust was purchasing Beaman Pond? For some reason, that seems like a question that I have, I have seen before. And and I was just wondering, you know, if if I'm. If I was on on track with that. And I think Glenn is right. Depending on how the question is asked, it will determine the answer.
Donna, do you have any sense of the order of magnitude of what? The average Kent homeowner pays in real estate taxes? Is it a thousand, is it two thousand, is it five hundred? I have no idea. I don't even know what what we pay, my wife.
Um, I I don't know, you know, I mean. I'm sure that that I could get an average um from the tax collector, you know, just to see what the. You know, what the average tax bill is um for any homeowner in the town of Kent, but.
I mean, if we asked, you know, would you be willing to pay an extra hundred dollars? In real estate taxes for these improvements. I don't know if that's ten percent of what people pay and not that significant or. It's a lot more. I I just have no idea.
Well, I think in my case, it would be five percent.
But could you phrase the question saying, what would you be willing to pay to make this improvement? Like if it's the next question right after, like this is the most important thing to me. Can the question be, what would you be willing to pay? And they fill in a dollar amount?
From a, maybe from a, from a percentage basis, would you, would you, would you jump support an increase to your taxes of one percent? Or two percent or three percent or five percent?
That's not a bad way to do it, although that, those are pretty small numbers.
Yes.
Cirque has this, this document here, which is a town profile. They have it for every town in the state. And there's some information here in terms of sort of per capita taxes and per capita spending, et cetera. So. Um, the per capita tax in twenty seventeen was almost four thousand dollars a person. Uh, see if it has it.
Ten percent, so. One percent would be.
But just bear, just watch your eyes for some, you're gonna jump up one page because it gives us here the household. Median age, yeah. I thought it gave us household size, so I was gonna use that to judge. I would say based on the the median household size these days, I would think in a community like. Hang on a sec.
If four thousand sounds like it, sounds like a reasonable, reasonable median number.
It's a little longer.
Well, do you think it's a little low? I mean.
Yeah, the average household size in Kent right now is two point one one. And the part of that is because seasonal and occasional occupancy. So the average tax bill in town is probably. I would say seven to eight thousand dollars.
And that's real estate tax or that's?
That would be uh per capita tax, which is real estate act, yes.
Just real estate, not, not income tax, Connecticut income tax.
No, that's not. But that, the income tax wouldn't come back to the town, so that would be. So if you. I think most people, if they were asked about an eight hundred dollar expense would blanch at that. Additional, that's ten percent increase, five percent is four hundred dollars. I I would suggest that you're probably in somewhere around maybe somewhere between one hundred and two fifty. Could be a reasonable number that you would gauge support and not scare the living daylights out of people. And you might even just go with a more modest number of a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars and say. Because because townwide with all of the housing units in Kent, that, I mean, that can add up to quite a significant amount of money down. So.
Well, I thi- I think it's worth asking, in whatever form we ask it, I think uh. I I I I think Glenn's idea regarding an amount is right, that five hundred is, you know, five hundred is too much. A hundred dollars is probably right, I mean, fifty to a hundred to one fifty, but you know, somewhere in that range and however you, however you can, you can uh. You can.
Number I wrote down, that was a hundred, just just now as we were talking, because I I think the issue is. It's enough to force people to get away from just a a dream. It it's it's a harsh reality now. And a hundred dollars is enough to get their attention, but not enough to scare the living daylights out of them. So. In a sense, it's it's a round number. We're asking people, are you serious about, you know, what's the one thing you'd like to make happening again? And if it's blank, would you be willing to spend a hundred bucks a year to make that happen? If the answer is no. Then we have our answer. Yes. Or we could even drop back from that and say, well, would you spend fifty? If they say no to that, say, well, would you spend fifty? I don't want to make it too complicated. We're in the early stages of the P U C D process. I think the best outcome from this is going to be the big picture issues. That people care passionately about. And I think that'll be good information for the plan. So I think we can ask them to sort of, you know, put their money where their mouth is um and ask them a dollar question and I think. Fifty to a hundred is good.
Sold.
Um, I think those are some good questions. Other thoughts on the survey?
I've got two, if I can jump in. On on question, question number three on page two, it, um, is there ever? Is there ever a situation where somebody would not live but own? Um, property in Kent, so are are we, are we making it a somewhat of a double negative here that that might exclude people? Or people might not know how to answer that question?
I think there are people who own and don't live.
So maybe we strike live or and just have, I don't own a property in Kent. Or I don't live in Kent and have a separate one for, I don't own a property in Kent. But they might, they might be selecting both of those. And does it matter? Are we getting wrapped around the axle?
Well, I think I was, we're talking question two, correct, right, Matt?
Question three.
Three, I'm sorry.
You know, how long have you lived in Kent? And it gives a whole series of of durations and then it says, I don't live or own property in Kent. And maybe it's, I don't live in Kent because we've already, we've already asked the question about whether you. Whether you own property.
I did one survey where where people got booted if they weren't a resident. And we got some nasty feedback because there were people who, you know, visited Kent or came regularly. They lived in a surrounding town. And they had thoughts or ideas. And so I think what we could do is go back to question two and ask people there. Whether they live or own property here. And we can separate those results out and say, okay. Well, the people who live here feel this way and the people who don't feel another way. So I wouldn't necessarily boot people, but I think we can ask people to be specific that, you know, they're not a resident or they don't, they don't own property.
Yeah, I agree. I I agree that that everybody who, everybody who answer, everybody who wants to answer should be able to answer. You know, everybody's got some stake, right? Okay, and then my my other question is uh, is it, is there any, going back to the, to the access to. To uh internet services, there, is there enough of the population who doesn't have access to internet service? Who would find it difficult to answer this survey online and and is there a way to make it available in analog?
It can be. The challenge is entering the data. So most people have smartphones. And I think we give everybody a QR code or some other way to do it. And then they can get access to that when they have wifi. They could do it, you know, they're shopping in New Melford, that, okay, you can do it. You know, on your phone there. So I think the, having a long survey period is useful. Um, and then we keep trying to remind people. Um, but I think with smartphones and other types of things these days, people are enjoying uh access in a lot of different ways. Um, and uh. If 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 there are people because of age or circumstance, just don't really have access to a computer. Maybe the senior center or or the library, we can get those uh done in paper. And figure out a way to get those entered in.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, I mean, we have a large population of seniors, um, and so getting it over. Um, you know, into Templeton Farms, um Stewart Farms. Um, and and I think the library, the libraries become very active in activities within the town. Um, so I think getting a hard copy, you know, to those three locations. Leah, who's our director of social services, does send out a senior newsletter. Um, you know, we might be able to include a blurb in that senior newsletter and tell them, you know, if you, if you need them. You, if you would like to fill them out, let me know. Um, and um, I can actually mail them out. And then they'll just have to, you know, mail back in.
So the format, oh, I'm sorry, Donna.
No, that's okay.
I think the format that we're looking at it on screen, let me get that back for a second. So we could print it out in this paper format. And I think people could just sort of have checkboxes. So I think I'll prepare it and. Um, we'll try to push people towards the online because that basically um analyzes itself. Um, the paper ones, if we get hundreds of them, that's, that's really gonna end up being a bit of a challenge. So we'll have to figure that out.
Well, I think what I did with um, and I can't, maybe it was with the, it couldn't have been with the last P R city, but. I remember Steve Kenner was a big driver of the last survey that we did. And it was a monkey survey. And we sat and and we entered them in ourselves. We went online and, you know, we took it and we entered it in and checked it off and put it aside. So. Hopefully we won't have as many because that was done how many years ago? Um, hopefully there are more people who are able to do it themselves, but I don't have a problem doing that.
Yeah, but I I don't, I mean, I think, I think the survey is important enough. Why don't you and I, we'll figure this out, okay?
Okay.
How old are your grandkids? I have a ten-year-old, but you know.
I have an eleven and an eight and they can run circles around me, so maybe we'll use that.
We'll work on that. There you go. So we'll take it, we'll take care of uh, uh, if we get any paper ones, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Any other thoughts or questions on the survey? I think uh, what's the commission's thought about an appropriate timeframe to run this in? Is, if we started in July and ran it through August for four to six weeks, does that work in? Or should we wait a little bit? What's, what's your sense of the vibe in town?
I I think that people. Get um distracted right now. I think you hit September and people. Get back to what's going on in their homes, what's going on in their neighborhoods or in their town. Kids are going back to school. Weather's changing. I think that uh, you have to let this. You have to continue this out at least to the end of September.
Well, your, your recommendation, Adam, would be September one to September thirty, something like that?
September thirty, yeah.
And I would, you know, is 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 there, is is there downside, Glenn, to putting it out? Um, mid-July and letting it run for for ten weeks?
I do think you get a little bit of sense of urgency, uh, helps a little bit with uh people's uh reminder. If it drags on too long, people don't remember, did I do this, that I, you know, what happened? They they don't, they don't have the sense of urgency. So. Um, I I think having uh perhaps a a four-week window, perhaps as Adam was suggesting, would 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 work. Um, I think if we wanted to start in August and run it into mid-September, then I might go six weeks to kind of try to take advantage of both. But I'm not sure I'd go, you know, any longer than that. So I I think the issue is trying to find the right time period that works, given Kent's vibe. And if Adam says it's like people are enjoying summer and, you know, they'll buckle down in September, we can work around this. I normally um like to put the um survey in the beginning of the process because it sets the stage for the work that's going to come. But I I need to be coming out to Kent to do some research and analysis and. Prepare demographic and other information, so we can, we can push this back a little bit.
What if you did it mid-August through the end of September? I I think people, you know, there's a lot of people who are away, going off through Labor Day and uh they get back. Um, so maybe mid-August and you give people, you know, through September. To look at this and um. And get back to it.
And I think with Donna, we can create some PR to let people know that the survey is going to go live on such and such a day. We can set the survey up now. We can get the QR codes and everything would suddenly become active as of a specific day. And so we can build a little bit of interest and excitement leading up to that day. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna necessarily wait till then to start the PR campaign. We can start early. So I can do that as well.
I think that's the way to go. I think it's, would be good to get people aware that this is coming out. Um, I totally agree with Adam that people are distracted. I totally agree with Adam that people are distracted, they're away, especially since COVID is somewhat behind us. Many people are taking advantage and taking vacations and doing things that they haven't had the chance to do. So I think we'll lose them, or we won't have the results that we're looking for if we do it too soon. But I think having constant reminders or press releases or, you know, just keeping it as an idea in front of people would be a terrific way to organize it.
Got it. All right. So I will work with Donna. We'll get some PR and other things like that going for roughly a mid-August deployment. We'll figure out a day in mid-August that'll be our, our start day on that. Does that work?
Just a follow-up question. I, I just don't remember the first and last pages. Are people self-identifying? Are they saying their names?
No. Apparently don't do that, Mark. I mean, I think the issue is this is not about who's proposing an idea. It's about the, you know, the wisdom of the crowds. There's a great book called Wisdom of Crowds and it really sort of describes the fact, the value you get from a large survey. When asking people to identify themselves, it can actually sort of curtail responses and people's willingness to sort of think freely. So I haven't ever done that, to be honest with you. I guess I'd, I'd be prepared to consider it, but.
I wouldn't answer one that, if I, if I went through the process and the last thing was for me to put my name, I would not submit it. I, I wouldn't, you know, I mean, because I don't think it's important for you to know who I am. It's more important for you to know what I think. So asking for my name kind of makes me think they're gonna come back and ask me additional questions based on my answers. And so, you know, I, I'm, I, I wouldn't do it.
I have a question. We're also looking at this as, it's not any one individual's answer to their, the questionnaire. When, when you look at this and you have, you know, this percentage of the people who answered it thought that, that living close to work was very important. You know, where, as opposed to only 1% of the people thought that one of the other things, you know, it, it's, so it's less an individual thing or, or who somebody was and more a aggregate of, of the answers.
I, I think that's what's the biggest value here for us as part of this effort is to learn what people gravitate towards as being the key issues for the community as a whole. I, I chuckle sometimes that wisdom can be found in the strangest places. So if, if an anonymous survey allows people to be a little creative with ideas, we may find, we may be surprised where the best idea comes from. But it may not have shown up if, if, you know, people had to put their name to their idea. I think when we get to the community meeting next spring, people will be there. I, I imagine that was likely to be either an online or in-person meeting. Depending on circumstances at that time, and we'll be able to identify who's got what comment. But I think at this point, my, my hope would be to get hundreds of people to share their information with us and learn from that. About the, the issues which are shared within the community.
Glenn, this is Alice Hicks.
Hi, Alice. How are you?
I, just a quick note. My, or my question before this discussion, this particular subject about identifying yourself was how does someone's identity stay protected? So I had a complete, I'm on the page of it not being, in fact, being sure the answerer knows that their identity is protected. That's just my, just my input.
Thank you. It's kind of a technical issue too. I just want the commission to know that Survey Monkey allows you to limit the responses to one per IP address. And I generally do not do that. And the reason is, is that you can have people who share a computer at home and want to do that rather than on their phone. So husband and wife can, can go ahead and respond. As part of the survey analysis, I do an IP check at the end. And if there's multiple IP responses, I can have one survey where I had twenty one IP addresses. But I went back and looked through it and I saw that they were all different. I don't know what the IP address was, but it had to have been like the senior center or something like that who got people together and did it. Because if anybody was trying to fix the survey by multiple responses, submitting different responses wasn't gonna be the way to do it. So I, I think our goal, I think, is to get as much participation as we can. I think that'll give us the most value going forward.
Do we, can I ask everybody? In questions eight and nine, do we want to add a, a specific question about improving access to the river? It's a subject to town goes back and forth and closing North Kent Road. In the last P O C D, we specifically wanted to improve river access. Is that, is that something that we want to put in this?
Sure. You know, that, that, that would be fun, you know, it, it, that would be good, that would be fine with me. It's, it's, people are gonna think about that question in different ways, right? I'm gonna think about that as, you know, as, as a boat launch and, and, you know, put in and takeouts improved by the DEEP. Other people, you know, Lish is gonna think about it as, as improving access for, you know, for, you know, picnicking on the river. But the river is a really important resource for us. So I, I would be in favor of adding that, Adam.
I think that's a great question because I think, I mean, the river is one of the biggest assets in, in the community. It's, it's a really kind of a focal point a lot of different ways, but they're not necessarily having access to it. So I think it's a great ask that. I think the questions would be nine and 10, Adam. Is that right? So nine is the list of general goals and 10 is how good are we doing on that? So those are the two questions to add that to, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Got it. Anything else on the survey? I think I've got one other document I'd like to share with you now. Bear with me.
Um, I just have one quick thing. I know at one point in time, David was talking about like our carbon footprint. Do you remember he was, he had provided some input on, on that? And I, and it's just, it's very hazy for me to try to remember what it exactly was.
Do you think, Donna, that that's captured in the addressing sustainability and resiliency question?
Um, it, it could be. Let me see if I can find it. The other thing that we had gotten, remember, was from Suzanne Charity about the Swift Pass, that that would be natural resources.
I think I'm okay with adding the reducing our carbon footprint in both nine and 10.
Climate change will negatively impact helping environment and rural character of the town. On construction development and farming all contribute substantial greenhouse emissions as well. The town work with neighboring townships and similar organizations regarding the local power grid producers and the owners to incentivize green power sources like solar, wind, hydro and power storage options. Uh, the national, the electric cars. And I think, doesn't the governor have something about electric cars by twenty thirty-three or something?
So I'm not sure that electric cars is something that's gonna fall within the town's ability to necessarily accomplish. So we might stay away from that one, but I think I, I picked up Donna on the agricultural question that you mentioned. And I think that that is definitely something that could be in the P O C D. So I've added that.
Okay.
And then I think the only other one was climate change. And I think I might add that to the one about sustainability and resiliency.
You want me to email you on the email that you sent in?
If you would, yes.
And Glenn, I, I would, I disagree with you about electric cars. I've had people complain to me that the, the electric charging stations at the town hall are not working. And that a lot of people come to Kent specifically to get to those charging stations and they're pissed off when they can't charge their cars there. And we're really the gateway to the Berkshires. Kent is a natural stopping point for people to recharge. And if there were charging stations in some of the, some of the shopping malls, shopping parking lots, that would attract people who were gonna end up spending two or three hours in Kent shopping and spending money while their cars recharge. I think it's a real opportunity for Kent that, that they've sort of dropped the ball on in a big way. I don't know if the town has to do it, or they should, the town should be approaching the private parking area owners and saying, you know, we'll, we'll subsidize you putting in charging stations. But it is the future and we're a natural location for those charging stations.
Yeah, I agree with Mark. It, um, if you look, just in this last week, Honda's announced their new fully electric car. A month ago, Ford came out with the first, you know, pickup truck that's a fully electric pickup, pickup truck. And though I don't have an electric car, my brother does, and I know when they're gonna drive, they map out where charging stations would be. So if you pulled up to the town of Kent where you know there's gonna be a charging station and there isn't, and it's broken, and there's no others available. I can see that being, making somebody upset because you're stuck.
Yep. I agree with you guys. It sounds to me like it's an important recommendation in the P O C D or hopefully even before that. My question in a sense is, does it need a survey question?
I don't know that it needs a survey question.
Well, I mean, if a lot of Kent residents support it, it would be persuasive to the town that they should do something about it.
That's true. It wouldn't hurt to add it.
Well, I mean, can you put it like when you start talking about? I'm looking to see if there's not somewhere that you can add in there, like under any other generalized topic, i.e. electric charging stations. Or I'm not making it a complete question, but just you know, there's that promoting transit rail options, but you know, maybe you could try to put something in there. That was question number nine.
Let, let me think about how, how to accomplish that. So let me play with that. I think what I'm likely to do is to, since we've got about six weeks before we're gonna deploy the survey, to update the documents so that everybody gets one more chance to look at it. And then we'll have it, you know, in the bank ready to roll when the time comes.
Okay, that sounds good. And in the meantime, I will send you David's email.
Thank you, Donna. I think the last thing I have for the commission this evening is any thoughts that you have about the 2013 P O C D that might help me orient my mind to the types of issues or concerns that you have had or your aspirations for this P O C D in terms of what you'd like to try to accomplish. So I, I think the questions really are, you know, strengths and weaknesses of the current plan or things you'd like to try to accomplish as, as part of this process. We don't have to go through them one by one. If people have thoughts that they would like to share, just throw out the number and express your thoughts and that would be very helpful to me.
Well, I thought it, it was very thorough and very well thought through. But at the end of every section, there were two pages of action steps. And if you added them all up, there were probably a hundred action steps recommended in, in that P O C D. And I, I personally thought it was too much. It was a wishlist of every good thing that the town could do. And I thought, I, I thought it would be better if it, if it were a shorter list of more focused things. Like here's not stuff that you, it would be nice, but here's what you should do. Really specific planning steps. That's my.
Thank you, Mark.
I too thought that there was, there is a lot of good information in the 2013 plan. It's become apparent to me over the past couple of months since we started talking about this and I've been speaking with some, some members of the, of the community that the, the general sense is that the, the P O C D is a, a, a planning and zoning commission document. That's not the way I look at it. I, I, I look at it as, that the, the Planning and Zoning Commission facilitates and takes the lead on preparing this, but it's really a town document. And I wonder if there's, if, if there's a good way to convey that so that when we're all done and we do come up with, with some, some truncated action plans that, that everybody understands that, that it's us as a community who are working on, on, on moving this forward and not just the Planning and Zoning Commission.
That's a good one, Matt, because I think there's a couple of ways that that can be done, either in the plan preparation stage or the plan implementation stage. I think casting a wider net, I think the way we've got this set up right now, working with the subcommittee is to focus internally to update the document and set the stage moving forward. And I think when the commission and committee is ready, we can share it more widely with others to get buy-in and support, et cetera. For, for implementation. So I think, I think that's, it would be an important goal.
My thing is, does it have to be so long? Plan, conservation and development, the one that's very long. And I understand that there's a lot of, you know, there's the town, the character study is in there. There's all of these other little attachments that have been placed. And I'm not so sure that we need all of that, you know, especially if we already have it. And I don't think a lot of it has changed. So maybe making it a little bit more compact and easier. I don't wanna say easier, but not as intimidating for people to actually read. Because when you get one that's as thick as the one that we have, people go, oh my God. And what they don't realize in actuality is the actual plan of conservation and development is only fifty, fifty years long. And the rest of it is just all the attachments. So I guess my thing is, is there any way to kind of curtail the number of attachments or?
Yeah, Donna, I mean, yes. So the process that I've used over the years generally involves the preparation of background research booklets. But then with the input and feedback from the subcommittee and from the commission, that briefing booklet gets distilled down to its major recommendations and initiatives, and that really becomes the plan itself. So a plan, I mean, a chapter in a plan could be four pages long. And if there's ten, ten chapters in the plan or ten topics, that's forty pages. And then you need, you need, there's some state required stuff on the back and some introduction stuff on the front. So, but the four pages is kind of an introduction, an overview, a map. And then one page, as Mark pointed out, of the strategies and recommendations. These are the key things that are related to this item. So I mean, it, it, it can be concise. But I, I think as, as we go, go through that, I'll keep that in mind and we'll work subcommittee to, you know, be as strategic as we can. But I think as we go through that, I'll keep that in mind and we'll work subcommittee to, you know, be as strategic as we can.
I remember when we did the last one, we we specifically, we were trying to not make it so dry. We were trying to make it easier to look through and read. And the idea was adding lots of pictures and graphs and maps was going to, and sidebars, which it's full of, was going to make that easier. I think it made it harder and it made it terribly long, like Donna was saying. And that was kind of done on purpose, not to make it long, but just to make it more interesting. But I don't think that worked.
So let me, I'll put some thought into this because I think I share your desire to make a plan a compelling document for people. In the past, the briefing booklets have become background material that are on file at town hall or even on the website. So they're always available for people to go look at and they inform the plan, but they are not the plan. So you might have a booklet, which is 20 pages long, that distills itself down into the plan, the four pages. And four pages, which are graphically interesting and clearly compelling in terms of the message and the information. So I think that's, that's a great observation. Let me think about how to make that happen. Any other guidance for me as, as we move forward?
I just had a quick question. How do you keep a, a survey or commentary or a snapshot in time from unduly influencing what should be a long-term plan? So, you know, we've come through a pandemic. People's comments and opinions and experiences are going to be shaped by that. If you came through an economic recession that was just monetary, that would also influence people's answers to the question. So certainly you want to plan for episodes like we've just been through, but how do you not have a P O C D be too reflective of a very specific point in time that may not cause a town to develop the best long-term strategy? Just for instance, the town has always been in general against drive-throughs because we thought that perhaps that was a way to constrain certain types of development. After the pandemic, a lot of people might think that drive-throughs are great. Is that good for the town? Is it not? How do you not have this colored too much by what we've just been through?
It's a great question, Daryl. I think it's hard in the sense that people are always going to bring their experiences to the table, what, what they've been through. You know, the changing nature of retail these days and what's happened in that perspective, I think, is often on people's minds. The type of situation where they have been cooped up for the past year and now they're looking to spread their wings a little bit and get out there. These are all sort of societal trends. So I don't think we can ask people to shut down from sharing that with us. But I think we need to be careful as the information comes in, how we treat it and kind of what we do with it. But I think that's a good reminder of things for us to be aware of as we put this together and make sure that we consider that as part of our work.
Good meeting.
I don't have anything else to ask the commission. I think you've given me just a wonderful overview of the types of things that I think that you're looking for that I can make sure that I put together and get together for you as part of this work. I think following tonight's meeting, my next step is going to be to start collecting information and getting work materials together. And then I'll work with Donna to get the survey ready and then figure out when it makes sense for the subcommittee to get together for the first meeting to start going through those work items. And for the rest of the members of the commission, I think the schedule says we'll see you in 2022, believe it or not. So I think you're always welcome at the meetings. But the next time that we'll be back on the full commission agenda, I think it's sometime after, after New Year's. Back to you, Matt.
Just speaking of the, of the, of the subcommittee meetings, I, we don't have to do it now, but it would be, it would be better for me to pick a, a specific night. It looks like we're going to meet once a month. So if we, so let's, let's just think about that for those of us on the subcommittee, whether it's, it's it's the third Thursday or the fourth Thursday or the second Thursday, or it's some other consistent day. I think that would be better for me. So just keep that in mind.
Matt, that's, that's very helpful. Our Thursday is generally preferable. I mean, I think the commission members probably are used to the Thursdays. Is that the target? That's our goal?
It could be. I don't want to, I don't want to speak for the balance. I know, I know Mark and Adam are in the subcommittee.
David, it's not Alice.
I couldn't tell you what was a good night or wasn't a good night right now because we're talking about fairly far ahead. So whatever night we choose is the, is the night. No, and I'll make it work.
Yeah, but if the the commission meetings are the second Thursday of the month.
Yeah.
Making these spacing and not making the fourth Thursday of the month, it seemed to make sense to me.
I will work with Donna. We may do a little doodle poll or something amongst the members and we'll get that figured out. And I think I agree with you, Matt. It's easier for me as well if there's a particular day. So we'll try to make that happen.
Just to throw it out there, assuming that we're going to be able to meet in person in the not really far future. There are nights that there are a number of meetings in town hall. So we want to choose a night that there's a room that we can use. Right?
Yeah, the third Thursday is actually. Okay. I mean, I the only meetings I don't have on my calendar right now are Board of Finance, but I've got all of the other ones. I know, you know, I had a conversation with my inland wetlands commission last night. As of July 1st, we are, we will be able to meet in person. But my inland wetlands commission has determined that they're not ready to do that yet because we cannot require that people who come to the meetings are vaccinated. And they don't want to be put in the position where they might be exposed to either a variant or, or COVID because it's not over yet. So it was their opinion that they not, that we not meet in person and that we're going to continue meeting via Zoom. And that's something that we can discuss at next, the next planning and zoning meeting to see what the consensus is for everybody there. But just to let you know that that's what they've said. But, you know, I think just working with Glenn and figuring out, you know, from a dual poll option, you know, I can look to see like one Board of Finance meets, Park and Rec, I know, meets on Mondays. I think, I think Board of Finance meets on a Tuesday. I think we're the only ones that meet on Thursday.
Yeah, and those are, those, those, yes, so those are all important considerations that we should work through. And we, as Glenn suggested, we can do it by doodle poll. And, you know, decide when and how, you know, whether it's in person or Zoom and what's the most efficient and what's best and all of those things. Okay, so that was, as Mark said, Glenn, that was a really productive meeting. It's, it's a good kickoff. It gets us all spacing in the same direction. And, you know, I've said it and I'll say it again, words, I'm, I'm really looking forward to this process and working with you. And I think it'll be, it'll be worthwhile over the next 17 months.
Looking forward to it.
All right. And I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.